Welcome everyone, thanks a lot for staying with us. You're watching Plain Speak with me Shivani Gupta. The much awaited special parliament session has commenced today. Parliamentarians bid a farewell of sorts to the old parliament building and shared some nostalgic memories. From tomorrow onwards, on the occasion of Ganesha Chaturthi, the proceedings will shift to the new parliament building, which was inaugurated by Prime Minister Narendra Modi on May 28th this year. According to government sources, the legislative business during the special session in the new parliament will commence from a day after, which is September 20th in the new building. The tentative list of the agenda for the special session includes four bills, but there's a buzz over a surprise legislation which might be tabled in this special session in the new parliament. And this surprise legislation can be the Women's Reservation Bill, which seeks to reserve one-third of all seats for women in Lok Sabha. Now, many parties, including the Congress, have been pushing for this legislation and not just historically, but also ahead of this special session, possibly preempting the move by the government. There is likely to be a big fight over credit if this bill gets tabled and passes. Remember, the Women's Reservation Bill has been taken up in parliament multiple times in the last three decades, but has never managed to pass. That's because it needs a special majority for clearance. Without the support of two-thirds of parliamentarians, the bill cannot be passed in any house. Another reason that it hasn't passed is because of the differences in the stance of parties, in coalition governments of both the UPA and the NDA before, that have tried to table it and pass it. This time, there's a real possibility that if the government was to table this, it can get passed, because ruling BJP already has the numbers in Lok Sabha and in Rajasabha. Two major political parties are supporting the bill. In fact, most political parties may not want to be seen as opposing it anymore. So, will the Women's Reservation Bill eventually become a law? Is it an idea whose time has come? We'll take that question to our guests in just a bit. But first off, let me take you through the history of this Women's Reservation Bill. This bill was first tabled in 1996 by then H.D. Devagora government in Lok Sabha. So, remember, it's almost thirty years that the governments have been pressing for this. But at that time, this bill lapsed with the dissolution of the Lok Sabha in 1996. It was also referred to a Geeta Mukherjee Panel, which was formed in 1996, which made seven recommendations overall for a bill like this. Now, then in 1998, the Women's Reservation Bill was reintroduced by the Vajpayee government. This time, the bill failed to get support and therefore lapsed again. And then from 1999 to 2003, Vajpayee-led NDA government reintroduced this bill multiple times. And every time, the bill failed to get clearance from Lok Sabha. In other words, the majority was never in favor, certainly not a two-thirds majority. In 2008, this bill was tabled in Rajasabha, this time by UPA One. Suggestions made, some of the suggestions made by the Geeta Mukherjee Panel were also included in this new draft. And then in 2010, the bill was finally passed in Rajasabha. But as it stood, it actually lapsed in Lok Sabha. It again couldn't get the numbers that were required. Now, also take a look at the parties that have opposed, at least some sections of the Women's Reservation Bills that have been brought in parliament over the years, as I mentioned. And not all of these parties opposed the idea directly or completely. Some of them opposed certain clauses as were presented in the past. So, one of them is of course Uttar Pradesh-based regional party, Samajwadi Party, that has historically opposed it. Rashtri Janta Dal also from Bihar has opposed it. Jantadal United from Bihar has opposed it. Bhaujan Samaj Party, BSP, led by of course a woman in Mayawati has opposed it. Jharkan Mukti Mocha is another party that has opposed it. Until 2010, SP and RJD asked that the government should restrict the reservation to twenty percent and not take it up till thirty-three percent. And all these parties have been demanding that the reservation for SCST community should happen in the seats reserved for women. So, what is likely to happen is that from the seats that are reserved for SCST community, that some of them could be part of the thirty-three percent if eventually this bill becomes a reality. Let me also take our viewers through what could be the arguments in favor or against a Women's Reservation Bill. Some people tend to be a little bit circumspect about introducing new reservations. You know, already the topic of reservation is a much debated, very hotly contested topic in India. But as it comes to the Women's Reservation Bill, let me take you through some of the arguments that have been made historically. Of course, those in favor, bad for it, because this bill promotes gender equality in politics. Some would argue a much-needed feature that is lacking currently. But those against it also talk about that qualified candidates, including male candidates, may lose the opportunity from certain seats, that overall reservations hit merit more than anything else. Now, those in favor also argue that the bill will break stereotypes about women in leadership roles, just like we expect women to break, you know, glass ceilings in other professions. That is, a push is required in politics as well. But those against it also say that gender is not the same as a caste group, for example. So, therefore, it should not be seen as an area where reservations need to be brought in, even though other reservations exist, especially SCST reservations in Indian politics. Finally, those in favor say that this will align India more with world norms and standards. Currently, globally speaking, elected female representatives are much lower in India than global standards. But people also argue that if you reserve seats, it will actually lead to dummy or proxy candidates being put up, who happen to be women, but are not going to be the best candidates that can be put up from those seats or actually are even in control of their seats. With that, the big question we're asking today is this. Women's Reservation Bill, is it finally an idea whose time has come? We'll take that forward with our guests.
This chapter is small, but in terms of time, it is very large. It is a historic decision.
Everyone wants the Women's Reservation Bill to come out, and women should be given, whether they are women or men.
They have pride, and they are doing it in order. So, the Women's Reservation Bill has not happened with full majority until now. That is the problem.
The Women's Reservation Bill should come to parliament. For all purposes, we have sent every minister to send a message to our delegation. We have been waiting for a long time.
We had demanded in meetings. Government is following its agenda. And appropriate time, appropriate decision will happen.
Let's go across to our guests. Joining us, Charu Pragya is from the BJP. Dr. Vishnu Prasad, Congress MP, is also joining us. CA Pradeep Bhatti is from the Samajwadi Party. And Professor Geeta Bhath will be with us in just a bit. Kaliku Rehman, leader of the BRS, is also joining us. Let me begin with Charu Pragya first. A lot of people would be wondering, and while of course you will say these are just speculations at this stage, this is not officially part of the agenda that the government has tabled. But if we were to take that the Women's Reservation Bill was to be tabled, a lot of hectic activities taking place, even as I speak, a cabinet meeting is underway. Why now, Charu?
So, yes Shivani, I'm glad you mentioned that, because as of now, all these extra bills which are continually being discussed are mere speculation. But I also want to state that the fact that women need reservation to be in the parliament or that we have to work on putting together a quota is something which has been a part of my party's manifesto for a very long time. This is something that we are committed to doing, not just women empowerment, but women-led empowerment. And we have started for that, started working towards that by ensuring that we are a political party and the only one in the country where we have a thirty-three percent reservation for women for party posts. And I think that has made a lot of difference, because women have a say and a place at the decision-making table. Also, let's remember that parliament is a reflection of our society. And many a times, the fact that the participation of women is lower in governance and in politics is also indicative of the fact that the participation of women is low, whether you're an architect, whether you are at a senior position in a news channel like yours, whether you're a judge, a surgeon, so on and so forth. And this is something that my government has been working on changing. We are working at the crux of the problem. So, whether it is making sure better education opportunities are available or whether it is making sure good nutrition is available to women, a longer maternity leave if you're a working woman, we are making an environment which makes it conducive for women to reach the highest echelons in governance.
No, but Charu, I'll just stop you for a brief minute. This Reservation Bill needs to be introduced and this... No, one, because we're running those visuals that were coming in from the cabinet meeting, which is being chaired by the Prime Minister, and we'll continue to do so. The second question I want to ask you, before I go across to some of the opposition voices, Charu, is that you know, the opposition is raising that point even today, that there's a lot of buzz about this could happen, that could happen, as far as this special session is concerned. And there is an agenda on the table, but everybody fears, and I'm using that word deliberately, that some surprise could happen. And the opposition certainly doesn't like the fact that they're in, you know, not in the know of what could happen. The fact that there's a lot of buzz going around this bill or that bill, particularly the Women's Reservation Bill, don't you think that's not right? That if this bill was to be tabled, everybody should be aware of it?
Absolutely Shivani, I'm in agreement with you. See, also, we are a party which is very vocal about the Women's Reservation Bill. It's not that we've ever shied away from speaking about it. But the opposition is habitual when it comes to rumor mongering and fear mongering.
No, this is not just opposition rumor mongering. No, 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 Charu, Charu, it's not opposition rumor mongering or fear mongering. And first of all, there is no fear mongering as far as the Women's Reservation Bill is concerned. But the point is that from the moment the special session has been announced, there is a lot of buzz first, because there was no agenda. Now, there's an agenda, but there is some outside, out of syllabus, as they say, stuff being discussed. Why is it that the government doesn't give clarity? For example, today, this news is big, that a Women's Reservation Bill could be tabled. Why not clarify?
So, Shivani, first of all, let me make it very clear that the government has given an agenda for this session, this special session. And this special session is critical, because it marks a transition in Indian democracy. We are moving from the old to the new. We will be entering the new building on a very auspicious day tomorrow. And that's an important part of the agenda. Even on a day like this, the opposition chooses to engage in negativity. Instead of rejoicing in the fact that this is where we have arrived as a nation, this is the journey that we are looking forward to making in the days and years to come. But instead of doing that, we have an opposition which is still continually rumor mongering. I'll get back to the Women's Reservation Bill. So, if this was being introduced, I'm sure it would have been on the agenda of the House. But that being said, the last time the agenda was given to the opposition, right? Did they ever bother to engage in any of the voting, any of the discussions at all? They did not. They staged a walkout. They did not care that important business of the House was being conducted. This matter to the citizens of this country, they couldn't be inside to vote for it. So, now when you talk about out of syllabus, you are not even properly prepared when you've had the syllabus for a very long time. You'd rather not just...
Okay, I'll now focus on the Women's Reservation Bill, because that's fundamentally the issue I'm discussing today. Let me go across to Dr. Vishnu Prasad of the Congress Party. Now, the Congress Party has also been a longtime voter of a Women's Reservation Bill. They've tried to table it under UPA, and previous governments have done so. I've listed those occasions. You would fundamentally be in approval and also in support if the government was to bring this Women's Reservation Bill, even if it turned out to be a surprise?
Absolutely. First of all, I would like to answer our beloved friend from BJP. She made it very clear, the absolute agenda for this special session is moving from the old building to the new building. So, there itself, the question of Women's Reservation Bill will be introduced or not is a big question mark. And it is, it is very clear. And secondly, this last session, we were talking about, we are issuing, we are demanding for a discussion on Manipur issue, where the women are brutally killed. And you are talking about Women's Reservation Bill? So, when you object, when you didn't answer for the discussion, when you are not ready for the discussion about Manipur issue, then why are you talking about Women's Reservation Bill? See, for Madam Sonia ji, the flagship bill is Women's Reservation Bill. In 2008 itself, it was passed in Rajasabha. And it was objected heavily by various other parties. And now also, we are telling, we want women empowerment just by giving reservations. I am very sorry to say, what happened to our first citizen of India, Dhravali Murmu? Okay, you have elected her, you have chosen her as a president of India. We all appreciate and we welcome it also. She being a woman, and especially from a tribal community, we honor her. At the same time, what is a hurry for our honorable Prime Minister to inaugurate our new parliament building? Is it not right that her presence leave that she inaugurates the new parliament building? As a first citizen of India, she should have inaugurated it. But for various reasons, she was ignored. She was not even invited, because she was not in India at that time. And hurriedly, after two months of inauguration only, now only we are going to the building. Why? In a hurry, the Prime Minister has to inaugurate. This is the respect you give for women in India.
Okay, I get that. I just, you know, Dr. Vishnu, I was hoping that we can maybe move forward from some of these points you have made, the Congress Party has made in the past, and speak about the Women's Reservation Bill. Now, the point I wanted to get from you was that even if it was...
Can I get twenty seconds?
Yes, Charu, I'll come back to you. If this bill was to be tabled, and of course, the historic occasion would be that a new bill would be tabled in the new parliament, this could be a historic decision, that's something that the Prime Minister alluded to. If this bill gets tabled and gets passed, will the Congress Party will be in full support of a bill like this?
See, first of all, let's see whether it is coming to the table or not, number one. Number two, for these ten years, the BJP has been ruling. Why they kept quiet and they were mute on all these issues, on this important historic bill, for all these nine and a half years? And now, election time, they are introducing this bill. This purely election gimmicks. And of course, if it is tabled, then see, we have been, our main election manifesto is support the bill. You know, we want this Women's Reservation at the parliament as well as in the registered assembly. So, there is no question about it. But what my point of view say, very clear, this is for election gimmicks, they lost all the...
Okay, Charu Pragya, I'll give you thirty seconds to respond, so that I can go to my other guest after that, Charu.
So, the honourable MP from the Congress Party talks about Manipur. But when the Prime Minister was speaking about Manipur, they staged a walkout. I don't think that was respectful, and then bringing it up now just exposes you for who you are. Now, when you are also talking about elections, sir, remember, we have elections in this country around the year. Every couple of months, somewhere or the other, we have elections. So, please don't link every single developmental agenda to elections. It just sounds very feeble. Where can you not support something positive that the government is doing for once and not attach ifs and buts to it? Every single positive work of the government, it attracts unnecessary criticism. And none of this criticism is actually, you know, of any value, because it's not constructive.
Okay, Mr. Prasad, thirty seconds to you too. I have to go to my other guest.
Today, what happened? When honorable Prime Minister gave the address, was addressing about this historic seventy-five years in the parliament building, for ninety minutes he was addressing, and we are all patiently listening to his monologue. Because he never believes in dialogue or any question from the other end. He never listens. A big leader, a good leader has to listen, but he failed in it. He is no decorum, zero manners, zero protocol, zero culture. See, after our Adiranjan Chowdhury, our leader, started speaking of, speaking on this issue, he immediately walked out. Then, see, he, what is a big thing? He is the last guy in the parliament. He talks about democracy and he talks about the legacy of this building. But he didn't have the patience to even listen to the prime opposition party. Then, what is democracy, what democracy is talking about?
All right, I want to come back to the subject we're discussing today. Let me also bring in the other political party's view. Let me go across to Samajwadi Party, CA Pradeep Bhatti, who's joining us. Samajwadi Party is one of those parties who have historically been seen to be opposed to the Women's Reservation Bill. Yes, there may be some minutia to be discussed there. But this time around, will the Samajwadi Party support the Women's Reservation Bill?
Thank you Shivani, good evening to all. BJP's double standard will get exposed if the Women's Reservation Bill that is passed into Rajasabha in 2010 is presented in the current form, in the Lok Sabha special session. OBCs, SCSTs, minorities, communities are against this present form of women's bill. BJP will vanish in Uttar Pradesh and in India. BJP's sub-rahapahal will happen if the suppressed class, deprived community rights and reservation is compromised in this bill.
So, you're saying that within the reservation... One second, let me clarify for our viewers. One second, let me clarify for my viewers what you're talking about. Mr. Pradeep, just one second, I'm gonna give you more time, just one second. What you're saying is that if there is not a quota within the reservation for women, which is for SCST community women, then you will continue to oppose it? And if the BJP was to bring the bill in the form that it was presented in the parliament in the past, without this quota within quota, then BJP will suffer? I just wanted to clarify that, right?
Yes, Shivani, just hear me out.
Yeah.
In the landmark case, I'll just go through that. Landmark case about case of T. Deva Rasan versus Union of India. Justice Subarao helped that the reservation is not an exception to the fundamental work, but a part and parcel of fundamental right. He also helped that it will be, without reservation, there is no equality of opportunity. Right to equality will be meaningless if unequal are treated equally. See, Samajwadi Party is the only party in the history of Uttar Pradesh that has provided reservation for women, rural background SCST communities in the Panchayat election. Don't forget that. Because of that fifty thousand women in the rural area deprived from the deprived class got elected from Pradhansh in early nineties and so on. This is the, this is the real empowerment and achievement of women from the grassroots level. We have to understand that. Samajwadi Party and the Honorable Aklesha Adasi strongly believe that women empowerment, whatever we have done in this part, is the testimony of our core values and what we stand for it. And we stand for it. Samajwadi Party from 2012 to 17 also in Uttar Pradesh executed multiple women-friendly schemes and created best infrastructure of India pertaining to women's safety and security.
Okay, let's not turn this into Uttar Pradesh versus the rest. We're talking about parliamentary reservations. And for the benefit of our viewers, as far as local governments or ground-level governments are concerned, their local elections are concerned, there, there's been a reservation for women across India. It's not just about Uttar Pradesh. But Mr. Bhatti, I want a very quick clarification from you before I go to our other guest. Is this a deal-breaker for you? Unless there is a quota within quota, you will not support this bill if it was to be presented again in parliament in this session?
See Shivani, when you say quota under quota, it is, sometimes it feels like we are doing injustice to the people from the rural background, the deprived class. So, we have to understand that if we want really empowerment of women, we have to start from the grassroots that we did in the past.
Okay.
So, these kind of models can only be, what is PDA? PDA is all about those uplifting those classes. Same reservation of PDA we are asking in this bill. What's wrong in that?
Okay, there is also of course...
They want only both of that words and the SCST communities.
Okay, okay, but Mr. Bhatti, aren't you worried, aren't you worried that...
That is more painful.
No, but aren't you worried, Mr. Bhatti, that the strength of parties like yourself is too low in the current parliament? And parties like the BJP, Congress, BRS, they are in support of the bill even without the changes that you are asking for. So, this bill could very well, very well become a reality despite your objections. And you would have to accept that.
See, numbers are always, you even can't consider us as a smaller ones in numbers. But definitely, when it comes to the power of Uttar Pradesh, it's much, much larger.
Okay.
They will be facing election in Uttar Pradesh, they will be eighty seats. There is a huge thing on the stake of what is in the party to implement, to present this bill in the present form. This will be a disaster for them. I want to assure them, if they bring this same current form bill and neglecting the rural class, the deprived class, OBCs, STs, and minorities, they will be a big disaster for them.
Okay, all right, sir. So, two things I want to mention here, just for the benefit of our viewers. One, the number of seats that are reserved is going to be thirty-three percent, but those seats are ideally going to rotate. So, it's not like it's going to be fixed, which seat is going to be a women-reserved seat. Those seats are going to rotate and change each session from session. And secondly, there are SCST reserved seats already, as far as our parliamentary elections are concerned.
And about OBCs and minorities.
Yes, yes, there are already SCST reserved seats as far as our parliament is concerned. Sir, I would request you, please not to speak over me. Please be patient, you've had your time. There are SCST reserved seats already in parliament, and some of those will also be rotated. From time to time, some of them will become, come under, fall under the women reservation, and others will not. I want to quickly bring in Kaliku Rehman of the BRS as well, also another party that certainly ahead of this session has been, you know, batting for a Women's Reservation Bill. The BRS will be in full support if the government was to table this? Kaliku Rehman?
Yes, hundred percent. In fact, it is we who have been demanding for the introduction and the passage of the Women's Reservation Bill. And if you remember, in the month of March, our leader, Kavita ji, in fact, staged protest in Delhi in support of the Women's Reservation Bill. And we, in fact, and today also, our MPs, in fact, stayed there, you know, near the parliament for the introduction of the bill. So, and one thing which we fail to understand that, because our Prime Minister said that it is going to be a special session. So, and still, what is the special agenda has not been revealed to the nation. So, when, just simply, moving from the old building of the parliament to the new building cannot be a special occasion, though we celebrate the occasion. But the, why, you know, the nation is being kept under dark when it comes to, you know, the introduction of the Women's Reservation Bill?
Well, it's also to mark seventy-five years of parliament.
No, absolutely. No, no, but you know, I definitely, we definitely like to commend, you know, the efforts of Sonia Gandhi ji, because in the, in 2010, she made an effort and she had passed this in the Rajasabha. But it could not, you know, go through in the Lok Sabha. But one good thing is there, that because if the bill is passed in Lok Sabha, it doesn't have to go to Rajasabha, because Rajasabha doesn't get dissolved. So, that's the advantage you have got. And moreover, the, you know, the draft is, you know, ready. So, BJP doesn't have to really do any kind of homework, you know, for passing this bill, because the bill is already there actually. Okay, because there are few parties who have their own reservations, you know, with regard to this bill. But I think in totality, we are with this bill and we will hundred percent support the BJP government, you know, for the passage of this bill, for the smooth passage of the bill.
All right, you made some objections about what is so special about this session and why did we need a special session just to move from the old parliament building to the new parliament building? I'll give Charu Pragya an opportunity to respond to that, but I want to bring in Professor Geeta Bhath as well. As an academician and a female academician yourself, do you think the Women's Reservation Bill is an idea whose time has come, that finally we need to all come on board and make an efforts to pass this legislation? Or do you think there are concerns still about, you know, reservation per se?
Well, Shivani, I think, you know, every idea has its own time. And probably, in the 21st century, with the initiation of Amrit Kail, this could be one of the finest, you know, bill which could be passed in the new parliament, that in itself could be historic. And yes, definitely, you know, for very long, it was in 1996, when for the first time, when the amendment was brought and one-third of the seats in Panchayati Raj, they were reserved for women. And after that, there was a demand that even in the, in the parliament, you know, there should be a reservation of thirty-three percent for women. But we know that, we have seen how the women, this particular bill for women reservation, it faced very stiff resistance in 2010, though it was mentioned in your program that in, that it was passed in Rajasabha. But it was never, you know, it never saw the light of the day in the, in the Lok Sabha. And we remember that, you know, the kind of, you know, hurling of very, 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 very sharp words and throwing of papers happened at that time. So much so, we know Samajwadi Party's, you know, Mulayam Singh Yadav ji, though he is no more now, but he had made very controversial remarks at that time, saying that, you know, rural women will not be benefited by it, because they are not that affluent and attractive. Basically, very well hinting that women, it is not on their merit that they are, you know, they are going to get to a position of being a parliamentarian, which was very, very objectionable even then and is even today. But the point is that, you know, much water has flown through the gang. Then, and at present, yes, it is very important, because past fifty percent of the population of this country, women need to be heard and need to be participative in the decision-making processes in this country. And for that, it is definitely very important that they should be politically represented, represented. However, if you look at the bill which was introduced in 2010, like for example, there was this question being raised about reservation.
Yes.
Now, asking for a reservation within a reservation, one could, I mean, how the, how the bill is going to be placed and the debate that will take place along with it. You see, there is already a reservation in terms of SCST in the, in the parliament. So, there could be one-third of those seats could be given to the, to the women from the SC and ST there.
No, no, like I mentioned, there's obviously a way to work around that. Yes, there are legitimate concerns about SCST seats. But because all of these thirty-three percent seats are going to... But because all of these 33% seats are going to rotate, you could divide them equally, you can divide them in the proportional manner in percentage between the general seats and the SCST seats. Then it takes care of the concern that is being raised. Obviously, there are means, means and ways to do that.
Yes, definitely. And of course, there is one more clause which is many times discussed and that is that, you know, this reservation is going to seal after 15 years.
Yes.
You know, reservation for women. So that itself needs to be, you know, discussed and deliberate. Because you see, is 15 year as a, like, why this timeline? Why is it that 15 years we feel will suffice for, in terms of, you know, equality of participation?
So this is where I wanted to come in. And let me go across to some of our other panelists on this as well. Mr. Vishnu, I'm coming to you first. I want your thoughts and the Congress Party's thoughts on this, on what you think would be the ideal combination? So if you look at the number of women who used to contest, for example, for Lok Sabha from 1999 to 2019, that number has increased almost by four times or at least, you know, it has tripled, I can say that much, from 284 to 726. And out of which, the number of women who won or the representation of women has also increased from 9% to 14.4%. So we have seen a gradual increase in the number of candidates that used to be put up and the number of female candidates who are winning those elections. So do you think that since the trajectory is already going upwards, a 15-year or a three-term limit would be the ideal limit?
Go again, what is the question?
Sir, there is a talk that there would be a 15-year limit if the Women's Reservation was to kick in. It would last only for 15 years. So that's roughly three terms. Do you think that would be the appropriate amount of time?
Okay.
To, you know, boost the number of women who participate in elections and win?
There should be no limit.
There should be no limit, you're saying?
No, no, why there should be a limit? There should be no limit, as well as I am concerned. But first, let this bill be introduced. We want this bill to be introduced first. Then after healthy discussion and debate, then this, this has to be passed. And I completely agree with the fact that women has to be participating in, in the, serving the nation. In, and decision-making also, she has, the women has to be a main part. And Madam Sonia ji is very particular that women has to be given the full powers. And that we have already seen in the Congress Party, from Indira ji, then first speaker was Meera Kumar. Meera Kumar, then she is not only women, but also AC.
Okay.
Then Fatima Abhi, the first president. So what Congress Party has been telling for all these decades, at least now, you know, let's, let's come together and this, this bill is a historic bill and due regards and due powers has to be given to the women fully, not for name sake or rubber stamp, but due powers has to be given fully. And that will be ensured by the Congress Party.
Okay.
And we completely, you know, agree, the fact that women are very important, their voices has to be heard.
So this could be one of those rare occasions where there could actually be, you know, bipartisan support for a bill that we haven't really seen in a long time, where certainly, the BJP and the Congress could come on the same page and bat for the Women's Reservation Bill. And I also wonder if there's going to be some credit war of sorts with the way things are going. But I'll leave that aside for a day when we actually see the bill being tabled. Charu, I'll also give you a minute on this same issue that I'm discussing. The representation of women, both in terms of how many women participate in the elections for Lok Sabha and how many of them are winning, is already going up. So do you believe that it's given that context, there should be a time limit to a women reservation? Because ideally, we don't want reservations to last forever. The idea of reservations was always to be, you know, a time-bound support so that you can bring everybody to parity?
Yes. And you're so right about that, Shivani, and this is my own personal opinion. See, the whole idea of reservation is to get to a place in society where reservations are no longer needed and that's equality in its true sense. However, I will not comment on this on the party's behalf. That being said, I'm looking forward to what the next four days hold for us. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, not much that can be revealed even by the BJP right now. I do thank all of our guests for joining us. It's going to be interesting to see if and when this Women's Reservation Bill gets tabled and what the stand of each party is going to be.